I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks.
Thank you. I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee, held on Tuesday, April 23rd, commencing at 4:32 PM. I am Councilmember Nueva Camina, Presiding Officer. And in -- councilmembers in attendance are Council President Kritzser, Councilmember Anderson, Salaah Houdin, Fields, Stewart, and Council Vice President Forsyth, and myself. There are six items on our agenda today, so we do have a pretty packed agenda. And the first agenda, the first item on our agenda is welcoming Jenny Liebeck, and it's the acceptance of Department of Commerce Climate Planning Grant Award to support climate planning and resilience projects.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Council. So Redmond was awarded Formula Fund through the Department of Commerce. This is to support compliance with House Bill 1181. This basically requires cities to integrate climate and resilience considerations into our comprehensive plan updates. And so this award that's before you today is for $350,000, and it will support multiple initiatives, including stormwater modeling and EV infrastructure planning. And so today, I'm just requesting that this item be added to the May 7 business meeting as a consent item.
Councilors, do we have any questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Ms. Liebeck. Just a quick comment. At the Growth Management Planning Board, we've received a few updates along the ways as different pockets of climate money have become available. And it's really clear that some cities are just able to get going, and your readiness to be able to be ready, to have the city ready to accept this $350,000, is really appreciated. So it matters that you're here. Thanks for doing good work, and happy to see this item accepted. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Are there any plans to do emergency preparation with the planning effort? Climate change, and sustainability, and wildfires, and all of the things associated with that? Is that, is there any intent that that part of that planning money, that $350,000, will be spent towards preparing the city better in the event of climate emergencies?
So one of the, the planning efforts is not specifically integrated into this scope of work, but is updates to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. But again, this scope of work is really focused for this grant, is very much focused on some planning efforts that had funding gaps. And currently, a lot of the, those efforts, again, we had no, no funding gaps that needed to be addressed. But I guess to answer your question, yes, climate resilience is being integrated into a lot of those planning efforts, and so we can prepare better for wildfires and other extreme events.
So as a follow-up, when you will come back at some point in your, is it by monthly now that you come to us personally, and every other month you send us a report, right? So we will get a better sense of how the specifics, and the actions, and the strategy that you will be using all of the funds for, correct?
Yeah, and I can make sure we integrate that into future.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Liebeck, thank you for presenting this. And also, I know that oftentimes with grants, and this is an example of one where it's prescribed that it is spent in a particular way. It did call out a deadline for the expenditure to be gone through by June of 2025. I know that there's no shortage of things to do. However, have we identified any gaps as far as any way that we would not be able to go through this money before 2025?
Yes, and that was addressed as we refined the scope. So the scope has actually shrunk a bit since, from what we applied for, to what is being presented to council today as a result of that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, this is going, providing to go towards, sorry, just to...
May 7th.
May 7th. Thank you so much. To go on consent agenda for May 7th. The next item on our agenda. Ms. Liebeck is going to be hanging out with us, continuing on, and that is for, to authorize the mayor to sign an inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services for Energy Efficiency Services.
Great, thank you so much. So just as a little bit of background, the Department of Enterprise Services Energy Program, they basically provide energy audits, they streamline procurement, and also offer project management support to jurisdictions such as the city. So the item before council today is a no-cost agreement that's used basically just to establish a working relationship between Redmond and the DES Energy Program. And so once approved, we would then select a contractor from the state's pre-qualified list of energy service providers, and then we can begin scoping out energy efficiency projects. And so this program has been in place for more than 35 years. Redmond has participated in it multiple times. I'm actually imagining some of you have approved some of these agreements in the past. And so today, I'm just requesting that this item be added to the May 7 council business meeting as a consent item as well.
Do we have any questions from council or comments? Council President Kritzser?
So just to clarify, you mentioned that we have, is this basically renewing, or has there been a gap between when we've had one of these agreements in place in the past?
The latter, yeah. We just, we had a gap, so we just have to enter into a new agreement with the Department of Enterprise Services.
Great. Well, I think our efforts, getting more tools in our toolbox to enhance energy efficiency is important, so happy to support this going to consent.
Any other comments or questions from council before this goes to consent for the 7th? Great. Thank you. Moving on to our third item on the agenda is the approval of the Puget Sound Energy Commercial Strategic Energy Management Program Agreement. We have agenda items that are quite the mouthful today.
Perfect. And then this, again, final item from me today is just requesting council's approval on this agreement. And a little bit of background, so the Puget Sound Energy Commercial Strategic Energy Management Program, it's also called CSEM for short. It basically just helps commercial customers earn incentives for making low and no-cost changes to reduce energy use. And so we've actually been a part of this program since about the end of 2021, and we're just looking to extend this agreement through 2025. And currently, we've been participating in this program, and are now, PSE recently launched a local government cohort as well, and they're kind of restructuring some of the programming. So we're really excited to be continuing this partnership with them. And so today, I'm just requesting that we add this item again to the May 7 council business meeting as a consent item.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Salaah Houdin?
Yep, no question. Just a really quick comment for the listening public. I had an opportunity to meet with Matt Larson from Puget Sound Energy, and he walked me through the entire Puget Sound Energy website to talk through some efficiency and green options, opportunities for residential residents and businesses in Redmond and across our region. And I would encourage folks to take a look at the website, just to see what opportunities there are available, and I'm excited about, you know, opportunities that we have in Redmond as well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions before this goes to consent on the 7th? Councilmember President?
Just one comment. I think if we can have everyone kind of confirm, confirm that we're good going on consent on these items, that would be great.
Absolutely.
I know we've had that in the past. We wanted to have affirmative consent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, the way we have done it is we turn around and ask, is there any dissent?
Yeah, exactly. Is there any concern with putting this on consent?
Correct.
I guess would be part of it. Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any concern for putting this on consent, on the agenda for consent on the 7th? Wonderful. Thank you, Jenny. Next on the agenda is the 2024 Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee Work Plan. And Director Hamilton is joining us.
Good afternoon, City Council. Director Lorraine Hamilton from the Parks and Recreation Department. This item is our work plan for PES for this coming year. Staff and myself worked with Councilmember Nueva Camina on it to ensure that we were capturing things. I'm happy to also take any notes of things we may have missed, but looking to put this, I believe, on consent in, at the May 7 meeting, I believe, with some of the other work plans. Are there any questions for us on that?
Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. There's been a lot of community interest in the dog parks and community gardens the last couple of years. In Q1, we had a review of last summer's program, as well as hearing about how the pilot would continue through this summer. I'm just wondering, especially given that it's a budget year, if we need to put another recap in before the end of the year, or how you imagine that might go?
We would be happy to do that. We do have a request into the budget for a permanent dog park at Luke McRemnan Park, which is where our pop-up has been. So happy to add another touchpoint. There, I think we were identifying that as we've kind of gotten direction and prioritization for this particular project, it's entering into some of our normal operations, but more than happy to do an additional touchpoint before the end of the year. But it's kind of just becoming a part of our park system at this point, and will continue through our normal channels of community engagement and park master planning and design to look at that as an amenity to add in places that it makes sense. So, yes, we can, and that is why we didn't put it on, but happy to also add another one back in.
Okay, well, I would be, I could be convinced that either option is great, but would be curious if the council felt it was helpful to have one kind of like, close of our two-year pilot, here's what we, here's what we learned, and if that would be helpful for the public.
Thanks.
Seeing some nods on that?
Yeah, we can add one in. I would recommend probably in Q4.
Thank you. Council President?
I guess I'd add on that. I think especially given that we're trying a new location in Hartman Park, it would be interesting to know the feedback on that. I had two questions on this. One is, I noticed there's an item around alternate funding program, and just curious if you can preview what that means.
Yeah, for us in parks, we are funded through a variety of sources. Some of that comes through the Recreation Activity Fund, some of it comes through sponsorship, some of it comes through grants. And there has been conversations in the past around if we ever wanted to pursue a parks foundation. And so it's a conversation that is identified in our cost-of-service policy, and it is also something that is identified in our park plan. And so it's a conversation that we're starting to have internally. So it is something that we may be prepared to speak with council this year, but may not. So it'll just kind of depend, but that would, that would be the nature of that update.
That is exciting. I think I've brought up to you a couple times questions about that, since community members have asked me several times since our neighboring communities, some of them have parks foundations. So excited to see that on there. Only other question I had is, and I may have missed it in the list, is I know we're going to be implementing a new system, our new technology system for registrations, and I know that our Parks Commission has told us that they have some project priorities, ideas about just kind of website enhancements related to parks and trails. So curious whether we could get an update on how that all rolls out and any of that work.
So our recreation software has already rolled out, so we can absolutely give an update on that. It rolled out in tandem with our summer camp registration and was very successful. Our new software had a representative onsite, but we had no major issues with that rollout. And I will say, I registered my kids for a couple of things, and actually found it so much easier to use than our former software. So happy to give that update. I would recommend we actually give it, we usually come and do like a summer camp, summer recap, and we can add it into there because that summer camp registration was the first piece of that. The joint commission meeting with Parks, Trails, and Recreation, we will talk some about, you know, the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission's priorities. That particular priority they have around the website is actually, would not be a parks project, it actually would be a communications project because it's a really big module that they're looking at wanting on the website. I think it's, sounds really easy, but actually it's very difficult and would take a lot of staff time, so that is not something that's currently on our work plan. That being said, there are other things that Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission have talked about in tandem with that. One of those will be discussed in the budget process, which is looking at our wayfinding and signage throughout our parks and trail system, and how does that interact with our transportation system, so making sure that people know how to find our parks, trails, and wayfind throughout the city on those parks and trails. So that piece we're looking at, that other item, we are not currently pursuing. One, because it's not a parks priority, it wouldn't be within our work scope. We don't do, we don't do that type of work on the website, and also, it's not on our current work plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I would say, you know, hopefully we'll talk about it when we have our joint meeting, but that if it's not in your scope, that hopefully it does get referred to the correct department so that they have the tools to advance those ideas. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, it's been since Friday that I've looked at this, so if it's on there, I apologize. Is, I know you and I talked briefly, and that the Waves aquatic contract is coming up for renewal. Is that this year, I'm sorry, is that next year, or is it in 2024?
The Wave contract is a 2025 item, but it would likely come to council through a contract, which we don't always identify within our work plans, because if we identified all of our contracts in our work plans, it would be really difficult. That being said, that contract is 2025.
So I think, I don't know that I would recommend that you put it on the work plan, but I do acknowledge that you can't put every contract on there. But this, in fact, is sort of a special contract because it reaches our community, and the opportunity to use the pool is really important to council, at least to me, and I remember it being important to council. And I think there's been a number of complaints about restrictions and the process that's being used, people not having access, timely access to put their children or put themselves in program. So I would like to see at some point before that contract, a summary of concerns or a summary of recommendations that your department may have.
Yes, absolutely. And I will, just for the good of everyone who didn't hear the conversation you and I had, there are a handful of items that have come to our attention on a relatively consistent basis over the life of this contract, and those would be items that we would look to incorporate into any contract that we had with Wave or another aquatics partner. And so as we renegotiate that contract, I can absolutely make sure that we do an update with you all to ensure that we're kind of hitting those at a high level, because there are a few items that don't necessarily meet where we would like to be moving into the future. Yep.
Councilmember Salaah Houdin?
Thank you for bringing this to us. Two questions. The first is, this might be a little specific. I know we had the conversations around dog parks, community gardens earlier in the year. My question is around, you know, sports that are growing, and parks needs that are growing, specifically cricket and pickleball, and looking at whether or not we'll see this year any assessment or any opportunity to explore pop-ups for those. I know that, you know, drawing lines on a field is a lot more cost-intensive and resource-intensive than setting up sort of like a barrier that could be used, say, for cricket. I know that community has expressed that a lot, so that's my first question. I can wait for the second as well, so.
So we don't have anything on our current work plan for that. I will say, it's identified as a high need in the park plan, which means that it factors into RCI P asks and all of those things. So I would tell you, while it's not on our 2024 tasks that we're doing right now, I will tell you, it is a high priority for us as we look towards the future. The pickleball question, we have actually transitioned quite a few courts and created a lot of flexible use. And actually, I have an email in my inbox from a tennis player assessing that we don't have enough tennis courts either. And so what I would tell you from that particular perspective with the pickleball is, these pickleball courts are about to open back up, so we'll have two more in rotation again, and then we'll be able to do, drop in pickleball here at the Senior and Community Center. We also do that at Orsh. And so at this moment in time, there are no additional plans to pop up additional pickleball courts, which I know that community really wants, but we are trying to balance that need with our tennis players and our basketball courts and all of those. Similar to dog parks, as we look at new parks, new master plans, they are often incorporated as one amenity option. So Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park, we do identify a sports court there. There are some concerns in that community around noise. And so one of the recommendations in that master plan we just adopted is to do a noise study. And so we will look to do that to see if we can incorporate pickleball there, or what types of sound barriers we would need to do for that to be successful. And we also are working to resurface a few of our courts right now as well. So hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. Thank you. And second question, not super urgent. In Q3, there's a citywide building security item, and was just wondering, don't want to take any items into my committee off of here, but would security make sense in public safety, or is that very specific to, you know, this committee?
I think that that's probably actually a miss on our part. We should have that on this committee work plan. So we can add that, I would say we will be looking at Q3 for that. That is currently underway. You guys approved that contract. So that's being spearheaded by Quinn Kuhnhausen, our facilities manager, and so we can bring that through this committee, so I can add that into Q3. Thank you for, thank you for that catch. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Is there any objection for this moving forward to consent on May 7? Seeing none, we'll see this on May 7 for consent. Moving on to item number five, which is our Redmond Senior and Community Center update. Director Hamilton will be staying with us for a little bit longer.
Yes, so this is the last update you'll receive from me before the building is open, so I'm very excited about that. We will come and bring a couple operational updates as we get up and running, just so you all know how things are going, but just excited about that. We did receive occupancy just a couple weeks ago, and so staff was able to move into the building last Wednesday and have been making themselves at home slash figuring out all of the things in the building. So just a handful of updates for you all. We were working through punch list items with Eric Dawson, who's our project manager in Public Works, ABSHR and other subcontractors. Those revolve around a lot of signage and AV, painting. I walked through the building yesterday, and they were balancing the HVAC and painting things, also like staining things, and there was a really wide variety of temperatures and smells in the building. It was kind of bizarre. Every space I entered smelled and felt very different from the next, but, so there's a lot of work being done. FFNE, so furnishings and equipment have been showing up. So if you walk kind of by the construction fence, you can see that the outdoor furniture has been showing up, and it's lovely pops of blue and yellow outside of the facility. So we're very excited about that. Signage is also being installed. Staff continue to attend trainings on a daily basis for all of the system, so AV, gym curtains, lights, HVAC, all of the things. This really is a department-wide effort. Our staff are working very hard to get this building up and going, so we've got our recreation team in there, working to get ready for programming, our engagement team getting ready for customer service, park operations is making sure the outside is beautified and ready to go, and of course, facilities is learning a brand-new building. And so that's always a fun adventure for them. Our installations are being completed. I walked, have walked through a couple times and seen the various art installations going up, and it is very exciting. And on that note, there's a community paint day tomorrow that people were able to sign up, and they'll be able to do a guided painting of a piece of the mural in the lobby. And so Mauricio Ramirez is that artist, and we're really excited to work with him tomorrow. Parking, the parking garage is being painted as we speak. There have been moving up and floor-by-floor pressure washing and painting, and then we'll begin to see changes from the outside as well, and they're updating the signage within the parking garage. If anybody needs additional information or just continued information on things like hours, structure of our fees, the kid zone, all of those things, amenities that are available, that's at redmond.gov/rscc, and so people can access that information there. The grand opening, as I said, is next Friday, May 2, and we are really looking forward to it. We have a reception from 1 to 2, and then the ribbon cutting at 2 o'clock, and then there will be kind of passive tours. So people will be able to walk through the facility, there will be posters that will kind of explain the building and the usage, but won't be any activation necessarily of those spaces. Whereas on Saturday, May 4, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we're doing a community celebration where we'll be activating that, well, we, my staff, the staff who's been working extremely hard, will be activating each and every space, kind of based on the different things that might happen there. So things in the gym station, gymnasium, we'll have things like Gaga Ball and a hula hoop challenge. We'll have some sensory-friendly spaces in our, what we are, what we call our exam rooms, which will be available for our seniors and community to use for various free services. Activities led by our recreation coordinators for seniors in the lounge to talk about what they're looking forward to in our spaces. People can make slime in the arts and crafts room, and that is the only place you're allowed to make slime because it's the arts and crafts room. Customer experience will be onsite, selling passes, registering people for programs, answering questions about the facility and rentals. The kid zone will be open for people to come in and decorate hard hats and help decorate that space. And then there's going to be fitness demos and music in the community room and food trucks. And so we're really looking forward to celebrating with our community and hope that you guys are all able to join us. And I think I hit everything, but if I missed anything, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, we are so excited in what, what a resource it's going to be for the community. Council, Councilmember Fields?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any expected overruns?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Any expected additional funding requests?
I do not anticipate that, no.
Any expected funding returns?
I would not be the, able to answer that question for you at this moment.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President Kritzser?
Well, I'm so thrilled and excited that we're at this moment, and can't wait to celebrate with our community. One question just for the follow-up, because hopefully lots of people will be coming out to these celebrations that we're having, but it would also be great for us to be able to report back and share about kind of how it all works, especially given the new punch card situation and all of that. And will you be planning to come and give us a staff report about the Senior Community Center after that?
Yeah, so I would anticipate that we will likely come back to you, I would probably say in July at committee of the whole. I'd like to give our staff a couple months to live into the building and see how things are working, so we can give an update on how things are going and any changes that might be happening. Takes a couple months sometimes to identify those things, but I would identify, I would imagine that we'll come back a couple more times this year to just kind of give an update on how things are going, what programming is looking like, and just opportunities for the community.
Sounds good. And in the meanwhile, I guess if there is any information that you'd love all of us to share out on our social media channels, I feel like I've seen a lot of our, a lot of folks in the community sharing out about the upcoming event, and assuming you're doing that comms push, but especially about like how it works maybe in the week afterwards that we, if there's anything we can all do to share out and correct information about it, that would be great.
I think that's a great idea, and I'll work with my team on that.
Any other comments or questions for Director Hamilton on the update?
Thank you. I look forward to seeing you. Oh.
I've got one myself. Typically, when we're opening up on something new, new buildings, there's timelines that don't always get adhered to for one reason or another. Is there anything that we're, we're going to be needing to tend to post-opening?
Yeah, there will be items, there will be punch list items that were maybe identified as not operationally vital. Those tend to be more cosmetic in nature than operational in nature. So all of the things that are needed to safely inhabit that building will be completed by the time, and actually are already completed. We have certificate of occupancy, so. But there will be a handful of punch list items, and honestly, things pop up after. I opened a community center once, and about two weeks after we opened, the machines started oozing green liquid, right? I mean, so buildings have a life of their own, even brand-new ones, and so we anticipate there to be some really fun things that we get to deal with as we open this great building. As my engineer husband once said to me, every building has never been built before. And so they will have their kinks, and they will do what they do, and we will address them as it comes. But there will be a handful mainly of cosmetic things that we continue to deal with after opening, but we will try to keep that as minimally impactful to operations as possible.
Thank you, Director.
Absolutely, thank you all. Absolutely. Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is the proposed revisions to salary commission for Redmond Municipal Code Sections 2.38 and 4.47. This is coming before us for, to be, to be approved to go to consent for May 21. And joining us today is COO Melissa Files. Welcome.
Thank you. This afternoon, I would like to touch on two subjects. One is the code changes that we have been talking about for salary commission, as well as discuss the question of council benefits that came up at the study session on the 9th. So in your packet was all the code changes, I believe, that we talked about. So if I've missed anything, please let me know. And if you want me to go over those one by one, I can do that, or I can answer questions. Either way.
Counsel?
I'm, I'm good. I'm good with, with answering any specific questions. And to be clear for the council, because I looked through this and got a little confused at first, is that we're talking about Attachment A. I believe Attachment B was the original set of options, but A is where the, what we talked about during study session is incorporated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great.
Councilmember Fields.
What she said.
Perfect.
So if there aren't any questions for me, I would like to put this on the March, the May 7 business meeting for approval. And I would like to put that on consent unless you would like it someplace else.
In the agenda, we've got it for final approval on May 21.
Well, since we're, since you don't have any questions, I'm happy to, I think Cheryl will let me get it on the agenda sooner rather than later.
Counsel, is there any objection to adding this for consent for May 7? Council Vice President Forsyth.
I just need, I, I needed the clarification on the differences between the attachments, so I'm going to take a second to quickly peruse before.
Okay. And Council President Pritzer?
Yeah, I would just say I would be supportive if we want to move it to May 7, since as soon as we approve this, then I understand from COO files that they can begin recruiting the salary commission if we do decide to approve this and allow it to happen during this year.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
I just want to confirm that this is irrespective of the information on the benefits that you're going to be touching on.
Correct, yeah. That's my next subject.
Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you so much for coming back and synthesizing the conversation from last time. I actually would like to just talk through a couple more things about one of the most creative things in the package, which is that removal of commissioners. And I just got to thinking about not just cases where commissioners are removed for one reason or another, but I think we discussed this a little bit last time, but resignations as well. And so how we might handle total number of commissioners, seats being vacant at any one time. So I just got to thinking a little bit about our, our creative solution here, and if it opens us up to any risks related to how we might move forward, again, making sure that we can protect the city should the city need to be protected.
So let me make sure I understand the question. Are you talking about not removal, but in case somebody resigns or?
Yeah, so the language here, and I'm sorry, I actually anticipated that others would want to discuss this more, so I may, I am making my question up on the fly. Let me see if I can articulate this more directly. In the event that, let's say, a commissioner resigned, moved out of town or something, so we were already down a commissioner, and then a commissioner needed to be removed for whatever reason, or a couple of them did, did your office, maybe this is the way to ask at COO files, did your office identify any risks in the arrangement of the removals that you would be concerned about?
So I think a couple of things. One, if somebody resigned, I think we would move quickly to replace them, unless it was at the very end of the process and we had a quorum of commissioners that could vote. The second thing is if we had a resignation and then we had a removal, let's say nobody is, they didn't show up or something like that, I think that would kind of put in the two-person rule, and we'd kind of cease doing work until we built the commission back up, which is kind of the last line of that change.
Correct. So if, let me just read that line into the, into the record. If the mayor notifies the council of an intent to remove more than two of the Redmond Salary Commission members, the commission shall not meet or take action until the city council votes on the intended removal. The interpretation that you just offered is there is a vacancy created by a resignation and also at least one more. It would be interpreted as the council would need to be informed.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we were clear on that one. I'm, I'm willing to try the creative approach and, and see how it goes. Thanks.
Great. Coming back to council member, Council Vice President Forsyth.
I'm good to put this on consent as is. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Great. The second subject is benefits. So we talked quite a bit about benefits on the 9th. What Catherine, and thank you to Catherine and her staff for doing a lot of research. So the first question was kind of how did council get benefits in the first place? We looked back at history, and the council actually approved the benefits that you receive. I think you heard from Daniel Kenny that the salary commission can only deal with salaries. So they can't deal with benefits, although we have heard from, I believe it's Bellevue and Issaquah, that their salary commissions do deal with benefits. According to Daniel, that is a little bit risky on their part as it's kind of outside statute. So what I would suggest is that parallel with the salary commission doing their work, that staff would recommend a benefit package for council that council could look at, and that we would present that at the same time the salary commission could present their salary recommendations. And that way, council could approve their benefits, and that we would stay within the statute of what the salary commission can do.
Councilmember Anderson.
Could you clarify exactly why the statute itself is limited, limiting them?
I don't know that I can. But the statute does say that the salary commission will look at salaries for the city council.
Does it say they look at only salaries?
It does. It says salaries.
That's a bummer. Thanks.
Council President Pritzer.
So I guess I'm, I am a little confused because our current code does say that the, I guess, oh, it's, okay, this is actually the mayor's salary.
Yes, because you look at the mayor's salary and benefits.
Got it. Okay, that's where the salary and benefit, but it doesn't show up benefits in the other place. All right. That makes sense? That's, that sounds like a good process for me. I think it's good for us to have a clear process on it. And, yeah, I guess it's not really in the scope of the salary commission, but it would be interesting for them to review and provide any recommendations potentially, or be able to see what, what the staff is bringing to us.
We can definitely do that. It just wouldn't be in, yeah, because usually they give a, I'm going to call it a resolution for lack of a better word, to the city clerk for what the salaries they are recommending, and those go into effect 30 days after that. But we can certainly have them look at the benefit package. It just would not be dependent on a vote.
Great. I actually have one other question I forgot about, but I can do it after others come to this.
Councilmember Fields, Vice President Forsyth, and then coming back to Council President Pritzer.
So just to be clear, council can approve its own benefits regardless of recommendations. The only other thing that would stop it potentially would be a mayor veto that doesn't get overridden, correct? I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then to double down on clarity, staff's going to make a recommendation, council can then have a discussion and come up with whatever it comes up with.
Correct.
Appreciate the clarity, and I appreciate making these two separate paths. I do think that we should consider not trying to time them together. I don't, since the salary commission is an independent salary commission deciding on salary, doing these at the same time may be an indirect influencing factor, and I think that the council should, based on their own schedule, take up the benefits question and come to terms with what our benefits should be, separate from the salary commission, completely separate from the salary commission.
Council Vice President Prit, Forsyth.
Thank you. I would tend to agree with Councilmember Fields. My concern when we talked about the salary commission potentially seeing the benefits that we would potentially be talking about was confusing and conflating the issues. So I, I like the idea of them being just completely separate as they are in code, not allowed to be handled by the salary commission. And I also think maybe we need to lobby our state legislature to say, this really should be a whole package. Maybe we need to change the state code on, on that, adding of that one word. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We're coming back. Council President.
Well, I'll just follow up on that. I think my colleagues made some good points there, so keeping it separate is, is fine with me, although if the commission wants to understand the context of what we might consider or how the benefits factor in, because they might ask those questions, I think having that information available or to be working on kind of prepping that item could be helpful. So, but I can, I can understand and agree with the points of, of keeping those, those things separate. The only other question that I had on this is, I know we had talked about the idea of doing this during the budget year so that the commission could come up with a recommendation and we could implement it with the budget, like starting January 1st. But when I read through the effective date in the code, it seems like it basically says it goes into effect after 30 days. So just wanted to clarify that.
So that is a statute. So that is an RCW that says the salary commission essentially, once they file it with the city clerk, it goes into effect 30 days. Now, nothing says that the, we can recommend that the salary commission would do it with the budget, so it would be effective January 1st, 2025. But it's their decision, because per the statute, it can go into effect in 30 days.
So they would have to, as part of their decision, actually specify when it would go into effect, otherwise it just goes into effect in 30 days?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm not saying they, they shouldn't do it within 30 days, but just, just wondering, you know, in, in general, if, if they wanted to look at that, whether there's that flexibility given this code. So thanks for the clarity.
Sure. Councilmember Anderson. And then Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. My question on this would be, are there other committees in the city that review benefits for all employees? And the one that comes to mind is Eback.
We definitely have the Eback, which is made up of a representative from every union plus non-rep, and they look at benefit changes.
Is their scope limited? So could we assign them the review of the council and mayor's benefits package?
Catherine, do you have? I'm not sure what, I haven't read the scope in a long time, so I'm not sure.
While we're waiting on that for the public, can we?
What's Eback?
What's Eback?
Sure. Employee Benefits Advisory Committee.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And the reason I bring that up is because of what Mr. Fields mentioned on independence and kind of keeping it a little bit separation, a little separation from us and having a group that's designated to look specifically at benefits and look at the whole context of the city. I think that would be really helpful. I would also be in favor, in that case, of having approval by the mayor. Thanks.
So for the Eback, the Eback is focused on employee salary, benefits, and we could always approach them. And actually, I would want to do a little bit of research to see if the Eback is the appropriate body to take a look at the council benefits, but I could see that it's a possibility.
Thank you.
And I believe that all changes in benefits has to go through the council.
Correct. Every change.
It could just be mayor-approved.
And Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. You mentioned that council approves, approved its benefits. I'm just wondering, when is the last time that the council approved an update to the benefits for the council?
I know you researched that, Catherine. Thank you.
I believe it was actually 1992 is when we were able to identify when council had the benefits, and I believe it was in 94. That was the last update. But really, the council follows the benefits of the rest of the city staff, so.
And if I could ask a follow-up on that, when you say that there are updates, have there been updates to the council benefits since 1994?
So the benefits that the council receives is the health benefits. So whatever the health benefit changes that have occurred for the regular staff, the council receives as well. All of the other benefits have stayed the same.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
I don't want to get in trouble for answering another council member's question, or, but I'm going to anyway. I think the only thing at, at discussion here is the level of contribution from council members, right? All of the other benefits, whatever they cover, it's, they're, they're covered for council, but it's a question of how much council contributes. Is that correct statement?
You're talking about the health benefits and the premiums that are paid?
I'm going to Councilmember Stewart's question about, you know, the last time we updated it. We get updated every time the benefits package gets updated, as I recall.
That is correct.
The only, the only thing that we're really talking about, discussing, is at what level do we contribute to our own benefits? That seems to be the only real issue. I, I would not expect that we would try to get more benefits from our provider than any other employee in the city.
Well, Catherine and staff have been looking at comparables of other cities and what councils get in benefits, so most of them, you know, have a health benefit component, some have what they call a transportation allowance, some have, trying to think of all the other ones.
Housing allowance.
Housing allowance. Some have a childcare allowance. So they're, they're different for different cities.
I see. I was thinking in terms of medical benefits and life insurance, but you're talking about benefits, benefits.
Yeah, just in overall.
For example, one city also, they give a stipend for their benefits. So there's just various ways that they do that.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then we are looking forward to seeing this for, on May 7. Is there any objection for this going to, for, I'm sorry, that the first part of it, which was around the salary commission, going to consent for May 7, and then further conversation around the benefits? Councilmember Fields.
That reminds me, do we have a timeline? You, I think you had said that we would be pending a staff recommendation. So is this a council leadership issue to schedule, or are we going to wait for you, the mayor's office, to come back to us in a week, two weeks, seven weeks? What, what is our schedule?
We can talk with council leadership about the timeline for benefits. I know Catherine and her staff are looking at comparable cities, so once we have that information, we can come up with a recommendation. For the salary commission, we can, Catherine is kind of ready to recruit, so we'll do that as soon as the code changes are made.
Got it. My question was around the benefits, but thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, COO Files. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We have now reached the end of today's agenda with all six agenda items. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.